That they have in overseeing this city, but God, I thank you for them. I thank you for their hearts and their care for this. I ask you to bless them this night, provide your wisdom, provide them with your continued passion. And we do pray for seventy-five degree weather. I won't hold it against you if you don't do it. But God, just continue to bless this city and bless all of those who serve in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'd like to say that Pastor Jamie, much first time doing our new location. I want to thank you for offering your service to come in and do a prayer for us.
Glad to be here. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, first item on here on the agenda is approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two regular board meeting minutes.
So, sorry.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to approve the February first, twenty twenty-two special board meeting minutes.
So, sorry.
Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Pat.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, next item is mayor's report. I first want to thank all our village staff for everything they do on a daily basis. Everybody, every department head. It's been challenging because of where we are trying to solve some of our problems and situations. So they've been working very diligently and educating Dave on everything too. I want to discuss a initiative I would like for all of us to be working on. As David Alakon settled in his new position, I think it would be a great idea to have board members work with David and other department heads on smaller projects as a team building exercise to bring ideas to the village board. Tonight is the first round of those ideas bringing to the board. First item that trustee Maribella will be bringing to the board is honorary honorary street name program. Also tonight trustee Levin will be bringing to the board an agreement for employee assistance program to support our employees. I will be introducing a new social media policy in order to enhance the village's social media presence. And I am looking for two board members to work with David to bring some ideas to the board for a new village logo. Do I have any volunteers?
I'd like to.
Trustee Whitmore and trustee Hargit. Thank you.
You're in the paper all our stuff when we change it, right? All the trucks and all that stuff?
For the rest of the boards, think about the smaller projects or items you would like to work on and let me know. And we need to request a special meeting for March first, twenty twenty-two. There's a lot of things we need to discuss. I can't wait till the third Tuesday of the month regarding finances, some open positions and other items we need to discuss at that time. So I'd like to also thank trustee Weiss for helping David with the building maintenance and assisting him by providing a background on the village finances. Thank you.
Can I clarify? We are scheduling that March first?
Yes.
Seven P M.
Twenty twenty-two, seven P M. Yes.
I assumed it was five, five P M.
Okay, yes.
Seven P M. That's true. I shouldn't, I shouldn't.
Yeah, seven P M at night. All right. First item under mayor's report, I need a motion to adopt resolution regarding the release and non-release of certain meetings of closed session.
So moved.
Okay, any discussion on those? Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to set aside the roles of the president and board of trustees to weigh the first and second readings of an ordinance adopting a social media policy for the village of Winter Harbor.
So moved.
And discussion, I'd just like to say, in order to enhance the village's social media presence, we have drafted this social media policy in order to start official Village of Winter Harbor social media accounts. The importance of this policy, just to ensure staff have clear direction on what the policies are when it comes to social media accounts. The social media accounts will only be utilized as a method to distributing information. Comments and questions will not be answered on the social media pages. The public must still call or email the village for answers. In addition to this policy, we will ensure all other village departments' social media posts are posting their information, post on the official village's social media pages as well. I'd like to thank Chief Mull, Mike Sheedy, Bob Long and David Alakon for working on this policy. Add Mike, David, any comments, additional comments on this? Bob?
I always have reservations about social media use and the way in which Illinois law has not recognized them very well. And that's, you know, there's, there's an inter, Illinois law has not kept up with recent, with the growth of social media and figured out how to fit it into the Open Meetings Act neatly. And until they do, it's always going to have some problems built into it. There's no way around it.
Well, social media is always good.
Yeah. It's always been easy. As Abe Lincoln said, you can't believe everything you read on the internet though.
True.
Abe Lincoln said that.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Oh, I need a motion second. I need a roll call.
Well, real quick on this, so the intent now is, I mean, it kind of ties back to some of the branding discussion, right? But there'll be one, you'll, either you or your deputy meeting will be in charge of any of the posts that go out on behalf of the village and you'll be looking at all of the different social media accounts that are out there and trying to see where we can consolidate or make sure we're being consistent.
We want to be consistent and I'll put the surprise out. I'm going to team up with Mike Sheedy so we can start organizing the social media that goes out. There are other social media pages. I know that the fire department has one. I know the police department has one. And our intentions are to make sure that whatever's posted on those existing sites, that the staff will also link it or share it on the official Winter Harbor Facebook page, Twitter page. So we just want to make sure that whatever's posted on any other village sponsor department page is going to be also posted on the official village Facebook page, Twitter. I like it open because we really don't know what other social media.
Will the department have been doing TikTok dances? All right. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to village administration for David.
I'm going to keep my report short. Finance, Nick Narducci, he's got tests started. Right now, he's in the process of compiling all of the data for salaries. So that's going to be our first, that's going to be our first exercise as we start our budgeting process. By next week, the worksheet should be going out to the department heads so we can start that process. He is also in the process of reconciling our accounts. So every, every meeting will be providing you an update on, on his progress. Select the building department. Is everybody's aware? We are, there's a few vacancies, but I'm happy to announce that, that we've been, staff has been trying to keep up and making sure that the residents are receiving the same level of service that there was when these positions were built. We have very, I found that we have a very active building department. So there's a lot of positive things that are happening and we're trying to get ready for the spring. We're going to see, we're hoping to see a lot of building permits, a lot of improvements in the community. And then I also do want to thank the staff of Village Hall. The ladies that were, Julie have done a phenomenal job providing the support services and getting these permits out and answering questions. So I do appreciate their assistance and this little exercise has proved that our staff is very adaptable to situations. Economic development, another, another role that we're kind of filling in for the time being. There are a few, there are a few things that we're working on. That we're in conjunction with the building department, with economic development, we're trying to get these projects moving. There'll also be a very positive impact to the community, especially when shared in the village. Facilities, there's another role that we're filling. We do have, we've been maintaining our buildings. That's a role that Pat used to, used to handle. We've been addressing some heating and cooling issues within this building. The heating, the heating and cooling system here is a little bit antiquated and it's something that we need to start taking a look at budgeting for the future for replacement. So you'll be seeing some invoices coming from some emergency repairs that we had to do this coming, this past week. And lastly, we've also been working on grants. We've been finalizing the paperwork for the two public works grants. So last week, we just finalized it and also the $250,000 grant to, to repair the roof of the village hall. A total, we're hoping very soon, a disbursement from the state totaling $864,920 to fix some of our, some of our buildings. So that's my report. If anybody has any questions, I promise that by the next meeting, the report will be in writing.
I did talk to Alex Fuller, our grant manager at Springfield. He's got all the documents as we know. But he didn't know about the $250,000 for the roof yet, but he said the public works grant is at a supervisor's desk. He's going to walk him through it and then we'll get some type of a grant sign-off sheet form sent to us. But he's hoping within the next three, three weeks, end of, end of February, probably the first of March, before we hear that. So hopefully, we're going to get that going. And the other thing I wanted to bring up about the March first meeting, Nick Narducci will have to be here. And we can meet him and he can actually bring us up to speed of where he's at. Okay, great. Thank you, Dave. Let me move on to clerk's correspondence. Can you move on to old business, new business, committee reports, administration, community development committee, trustee Hargit.
Make a motion to approve a council payable warrant, twenty twenty-one dash eleven, in the amount of $199,299.49.
Any discussion on the warrant? Okay, roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next, I know, John, is this one that you've been involved in and want to introduce or?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve service agreement with lifespan counseling services for the Winter Harbor Employee Assistance Program.
Okay, discussion on that.
I'll just give a fill-in. E A P, which is an employee assistance program, it's voluntary, work-based program that offers free confidential assessments, short-term counseling, referrals and follow-up services to employees who have personal or work-related problems. E A P is also addressed a broad and complex body of issues affecting mental and emotional well-being, such as alcohol or other substance abuse, grief, stress, family issues and psychological disorders. Some and most villages have those sort of.
Now, this will cover all departments, correct? Fire, police?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They provide six free sessions for, and then after that, that's up to the employee.
Okay, great. Any other questions on that?
So no cost for the village?
It is.
What is the cost?
It's roughly around $170,000 a month.
Well, worth it.
Yeah, with the times we're in?
Yes.
Especially, I mean, is it pretty easy for them to get it? I mean, that they don't have to go through hoops to check insurance and everything?
And it's confidential.
That's great because I think that's the big thing is really like making it easy, that you don't have to contact your insurance first. You can get started with just the call.
You can give them a call. They kind of screen it. They have the right person to refer you to.
Yeah, I think that's like one less hoop to get people started, whatever we can do to help that. I think that's great.
And the, the nice thing about this program is that we're going to be putting advertisements up so there's no contact with anyone from the village. If anybody needs any help, they call, they contact the agency directly. And the services also provides for their families too, for their immediate families.
And they will go, they'll go to the office or they, will they come here to?
They can either go to their office or they're, they're also doing a lot of rebuild on slash and trade.
Great. Great. Thank you, trustee Levin. Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, trustee Hargit and trustee Levin. We'll move on to public safety. Trustee McCarthy.
Make a motion to appoint Dr. Michael Bruno as police pension board president. Mayor Doc, it just says Dr. Michael Bruno.
Yeah, I didn't know it was the same one.
Just like we corrected the mayor doctor.
Yeah, we can correct that. I listen, discussion, I enjoy doing it. I've learned a lot being a pension from president. I've been, this would be my 23rd year.
Yeah.
Doing this.
It's going to stay here. You've been on it a long time.
I enjoy doing it and don't get paid for it, so that's not my goal. My goal is to make sure the police have the best pension possible. Problem is, state took all our money, so we don't know how the consolidation is going to work, but we're going to watch it very closely. But I, I'm honored to do that, so thank you. So we got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to approve the payment of the attorney's fees. I'm not going to read off their names because I can't pronounce them. But in the amount of $8,258,330 for the F L S A lawsuit.
Any discussion, Bob? Any, can you want to bring up?
Nothing above, nothing above the search, no?
Okay. Is this the first and only bill or?
Two.
Nope. Neither the first nor the people asked. Okay. All right. No other comments or questions? All right, roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Motion carried.
A move that we renew contracts with Metro Paramedic Services, Inc., increasing the hourly rate from $15 an hour to at least $18 an hour.
Second discussion. I'll turn it over to Chief Rocky Campanella and David. First, Chief.
Hey, thank you, your honor.
Do us know what they do? What does Metro do?
So Metro is a contract service that provides us three firefighter paramedics to work 24-hour shifts here. They implemented this last year. They were having trouble staffing the stations and we put them on previous chief did. And it took a lot of burden off, at least getting one paramedic in there every day. And I don't know how we could survive without that service in there. The beauty of this program is these people were already Winter Harbor part-time people that thought it'd be cool to work here full-time through this contract agency. So they're kind of our own people as well. They pay the, a 457 plan, they pay insurance for these people at one rate to the village. Problem being is with COVID, we've hit a national and local shortage of paramedics. People don't want to do it. With the shortage now becomes a premium to pay these people to be here. And now we're competing with the smaller fire departments around to provide a good rate because these people, we all talk, telephone, telegraph, telefiremen. And now we're seeing people leave department to go to department for a higher pay rate. And I can't blame them. Hasn't happened here yet, but Metro did contact us because our contract is up at the end of this month. And they didn't really want to renew our contract unless we raised our hourly rate for these people. Because they were at $15 an hour is, is pretty low for this area.
It's very difficult for them to fill positions.
Yes, and to be able to keep people here as well. So they really wanted us to look at raising the rate to at least $18 an hour for these three people. In the packet, there was a breakdown of what using, what this increase would cost the village. I don't know if you all got a chance to look at that. I mean, I went, and I, and people probably don't like when I compare it to the private world, but, and we went past the Panda Express in Racine the other day and the starting pay was $23 an hour for a fast food restaurant. But here we are.
What's your theory or thought about 18 and then maybe revisiting it next year, maybe bringing it up to 19 and then a year after that, possibly up to 20?
I think that's fair. I think that gives us some time to figure out where we're at, finance wise, and give me a chance to explore ideas of how we can increase revenue to the fire department.
You've already done a lot of that.
We have done a lot of that. We've increased our paramedic billing fees that our residents don't really see because their insurance will cover it or Medicare, Medicaid. Right. But you also don't, if you're a village resident, you don't have to pay the difference either in the, the co-pays. So that's another area we might want to look into. I know that's a political issue to, to embrace paying those co-pays for the ambulance bill to have for you a lot more. But we have to keep people in the station and be competitive with the other fire districts around to keep up that level of service.
And Chief, you've done a fantastic job, like trying to find, find, you know, increasing fees or trying to do something at the, at the fire department to help these increasing costs. Appreciate that.
Yes, I'm not a fee kind of guy. I live in the village as well. I've been taken in, taken in by our own ambulance the morning after I got sworn in. So I, I use the service too and, but we're going to, we're at a point where we got to start looking at options of how we're going to keep this thing going.
I think Keith, you, you had hit it home. The demographics and the dynamics after COVID and what's happening to our population within the workplace, especially for professionals, has exploded to where it's hard to get people anymore. And a lot of people are quitting their jobs and working from home now. But when I see what our police department, our public works, all of our departments, what they're going through right now, the crunch is there. And what our people are doing in all departments is a phenomenal job. And to see the reports that we're getting and see what they have to do with the amount of people that we have, I mean, it's like, well, we got a full staff, but we don't, you know? And we're crying for people and we're trying to figure these things out and it's, it's going to take some time to get to the end result of where it's going to run smoothly. And I think that's not just for the village of Winter Harbor. That's nationwide.
I want to expand on that a little bit. We're pretty fortunate here in Winter Harbor because we have a core group of part-time people that love working here. And other departments, I'm noticing, aren't, don't have that. And they have no option but to hire all full-time or all full-time contract, which is more expensive. But the dynamics of this village and the relationship with the village board is helping keep people over here and taking steps like this is only going to help that. And I appreciate whatever you guys decide to do with this, so.
Bob, just for the record, it says at least 18. I would say 18. Let's make it 18, 15 to 18.
It really needs to be a specific number if you're going to give up.
Right. It says at least. I would just say, you know, motion for $18 increase for me, 15 to 18. Is that sufficient, Bob? Okay, so you want to re-interject that motion?
Specifically, specifically 18?
Okay, so I'll amend the, it says at least 18.
So I'll amend the motion to $18 an hour.
Is the second amended too?
Who seconded it?
I'll be the second, okay.
All right, great.
I was going to do that, so.
All right. Second, all right, roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Thank you, trustee McCarthy and thank you, chief. All right, move on to public works and recreation. I would, trustee Maribella.
Make a motion for ratification of expenditures related to repair of unit number seven at 2007, there is a dump truck.
Second. Discussion. All right. Tim, what was wrong with it?
As the packet has mentioned, had a couple of things go wrong, but the main thing was the rear differential needed to be replaced. So essentially the backend just blew out.
Is that the January first one?
It was the January first one, right.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
The next is make a motion to request approval for bachelor women to complete A W I R I risk and resilience assessment for the village of Winter Harbor amounting to $8,000.
Second. Any discussion on that? Okay, roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
The third is to request approval for bachelor women to complete the A W I emergency response to the U R P for the village of Winter Harbor and for the amount of $8,000.
Second. Okay, discussion on that.
Basically, these two items, they're mandatory by the state and we have budgeted them in.
What?
Federal.
Federal, but we have budgeted them in our budget. So we were aware that they were coming. Unfortunately, due to circumstances, people moving, we're at our time limit on it, so that's why we have to move forward on this. So we should have done it earlier, but we didn't because of certain reasons and now it's simply.
Okay, great. Thank you. Roll call.
If I could, mayor, if you don't mind.
No.
Dave and I had a conversation, you know, prior to, and he had wrote the note on the bottom of the board action quest that this is going to wait to be built and paid after May first. That is not true. We're going to, we're going to bill it and pay it right now.
Okay.
This was just our conversation of making sure that the funds were actually available in there. You know, being part of the enterprise fund, the water fund, that's all, we, we want a clarification. So we want to make sure you guys were, were in the know as well, you know? So this will be paid for out of the water source fund, fund sixty, and the money is, is in there. It was budgeted for in this budget here.
Now, which item is going to be paid out of the enterprise fund?
Both of them.
Both of them?
$16,000.
Okay.
This was planned for, you know, it's the, the new risk assessment. This, this was planned for, you know, and it's the, the new risk assessment.
Right.
And emergency response plan that the US EPA requires.
Okay. Thank you, Tim, for this. Indicated exit.
Just want to make sure everybody.
It's the money that we have.
Yeah, so when you see the next warrant and it's on there.
Yeah.
You're like, wait a second, there was a note at the bottom of that.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure everybody's aware of it.
Any other comments? All right, roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Lastly, I, uh, uh, move that we adopt a resolution adopting the village Winter Harbor Honorary Public Ride-A-Way Name Program.
Second. All right, discussion. Who's the first one? Do we know?
The first one we do know, right, Dave?
Uh, not as of yet.
No, but they're coming with the information. Somebody contacted them about it.
Okay.
And so it was a, a resident, but the people that are coming forward are not residents, but they're family members, the person that they're naming.
Okay.
Just a couple of highlights that David, this, this is an important, so people know it's, uh, it's just, the honorary public way naming is, is people that were residents of Winter Harbor. It's an excellent way to honor people who have lived in the community, uh, provides a great way to promote the village's history. And, uh, it could be one of the ways that we, uh, for our village effort to document and preserve our history, so. The details are, the signs will be up for five years. It's maximum of a two sign approval per year. Designations are approved through the board, so they'll be, they'll contact the village hall, they go through David, Julie, or whoever contacted us, and then it'll come before the board. So we can verify everything's up to, you know, what we want for this to go through, so. And, uh, it's gonna have restrictions, so there's gonna be, because, like, uh, Sharon Rose, Illinois Department of Transportation Road, the Severrier, Ninth Street, Russell Lewis, Cano Charle, um, Lake County Department of Transportation Road, so we can't really do anything on there. As you'll notice, they have their own signage and they have their own rules, but any Winter Harbor road, and the roads won't really be, you know, there won't be a placard, then there'll be something on top of it. And the money will be, the village is not paying for the signs for people that apply for the application.
Okay.
We, obviously, we'll have to, uh, put the signs on at our own expense, but it'll give Tim.
Not according to the policy, the policy states that they pay for labor too.
It'll give our guys a chance to redo our signs we need to redo too, see, so we're killing two birds with one.
No, we're not redoing our sign, are we? No, let's be honest and truthful about that.
If they need it, if they're worn out.
If it's budgeted for.
Yeah.
Best than the problem, then why they're not compliant? Is because the money hasn't been there, so let, let.
So it's just gonna be the, the honorary sign to go up above the normal street sign?
Correct.
Okay.
That's what his job does, to make sure we get the money for that.
Right.
He's gonna come up with ways for that. So we can get the money.
Thank you, Trustee Marbella. All right, roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. We'll move on to public comments. I'd like to address the board. We just asked you to come up to the podium and include your, give us your name and your address. Marina.
You'll be good.
Sure.
Oh, okay.
I've just come to say hello. I am the library director of the Comin' In Library, which also serves you. I thought I would just tell everybody personally that Monday, President's Day, we're open, so if you don't are off, feel free to come in and see the library, see what's going on. We haven't, it's not crowded yet because I don't know where everybody went during the pandemic, but they have not come to the library. And then we also have, um, a couple of programs coming up that might be of interest to you, and I, I wrote them down, left them, I'm gonna go grab them and just tell them.
I signed my daughter up today for the, uh, Read with a Dog event next week.
Oh, yeah, the Read with a Dog.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, it just even, like, high readers enjoy reading to a dog. It's amazing. It's just, it does amazing things to kids' brains when they can just read to a dog. So the other thing I was gonna tell you is that on Monday, we, we're open and everybody else is closed. They're having a Colby Children's Museum come down and do a program where the kids can come in and, like, do dance, like, science, technology and stuff in the library, so that's kind of a good thing. And then there's also gonna be, um, African folktales theatrical performance on the twenty-sixth of the afternoon, so if you're looking for just something to do, then come in. It's gonna be great. So anyway, it's nice to be here. It's nice to see everybody working. I was here last week, I mean, last month, but there was so much going on.
Yeah.
But today, it's been great, so thank you.
I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry.
My name is Robin, and my last name is Smith.
Smith. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marina O, and I live at four twenty-one, on the drive, and I have an important question. Can I sign up for Reading with the Dog?
You know, there, it, it's like I said, nobody's coming, so feel free to come in.
I'll totally do that. That sounds like too much fun. So, um, so a couple of nights last week, I felt my house was transported right next door here. I don't know what was going on, but there were jet planes that sounded like they were taking off in my backyard, and that was Easter shared in board. It was tremendously loud. It went on, I don't know, hour or two. I, I sort of lost track of time. There was a lot of chatter, uh, on some of the Facebook pages. People thought it might be pilot training for night takeoff and landing or something else. I don't care. I mean, why do they have to take off this way? Normally, I hear an occasional plane, but this was really a loud couple of nights. And I worry that this is sort of a sign of the future because the airport is planning to expand. They have been planning to expand for.
Many.
Twenty years. I remember being at meetings many years ago, um, and the argument's always the same. It's gonna bring, you know, money to Lake County, and there's all these benefits. I don't know if that's true or not. I don't know if they've given the presentation to the board yet. What I do know is that they're planning on taking over fifty acres of Lake County Forest Preserve land. We don't have a lot of Lake County Forest Preserve land up here. Um, they're going to be destroying wetlands. They will build somewhere else. There are gonna be businesses displaced and people displaced. And, um, Wartworth has already passed a resolution opposing the expansion of this airport. And I would love for you all to get together with your colleagues in Wartworth to understand why they thought this was necessary, um, and why this was a prudent move for them. They had the presentation by, I think, Lake County Partners and the Airport Authority, and were simply not convinced this was a good deal for Wartworth. And after what we went through with, just a little bit of the change of the approach will bring planes right over our community. We have none of the benefits. We have all the noise. We lose over at Forest Preserve. Uh, Wapik and Savannah know it's not developed yet, but it's certainly one of the rare treasures up here because we don't have a lot of open space. And I don't see any benefit in giving up fifty acres to the airport expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, Marina. Anyone else? All right. Move on to unfinished business. I'll start down on my right. Trustee Marbella.
We got weather coming. We talked about it earlier. You know, it's gonna, it's gonna get warm. It's gonna rain. You know, it's gonna get cold again, so just be careful. Guys do a good job trying to salt, but it's, there's still gonna be areas that are gonna be black ice. I mean, I, I just recently went back to work on one of the worst days, and even at the Navy Beach, the guys are supposed to wear their little cleats, but I seen a few guys wipe out, so. I have salted my own ports, and I called to tell my wife, be really careful in the driveway because it's hard to see black ice on a blacktop. I mean, it's there, it's very dangerous, in a way. So if you're out walking dogs or whatever, just be careful and mindful, just stay away from traffic because it could be bad. Sure, Lana's gonna mention this, that the, the girls are working hard. Saturday, February twenty-sixth is the fun fair, and we hope everybody comes out to that. We're gonna have some, they're trying to come up with, the ladies, not me, I just go there and listen, but, uh, they're coming up with some good ideas, so we're changing stuff up. My favorite will be there, the cake walk, and so we can't do homemade cakes anymore, but we will purchase cakes.
That's all I got. Thank you, Trustee Marbella. Trustee Levin.
Aye, about that stuff.
Trustee White.
Yes, I just wanna say it's been a pleasure working with David, uh, getting involved with the maintenance, so, so forth. It's like getting back to my roots. And also the financials, and, uh, when we talked with Nick, uh, it's, it's gonna be a lot of, uh, work, but there'll be a lot of, uh, good things happening in the future, so I'm looking forward to the work.
Thank you, Trustee White. Trustee Whitmore.
Yes, um, as Trustee Marbella said, uh, Saturday, the twenty-sixth, we have our fun fair from eleven to, uh, four o'clock. We are desperately looking for any donations for cakes, cupcakes, cookies. Uh, you can drop it off any time during business hours, um, over at the Schleter Building. It is for the cake box, which is usually our biggest entertainment for the fun fair. We have, uh, tons of just prizes and goodies for kids, so definitely come by. And then we're, we're definitely trying to think of more ideas, so all ideas are welcome for support from our department, so. Any contribution always helps.
Cake box is the most important. I thought the apple box, the bikes would be the most.
It is, because we do have two bikes being rattled off, uh, thanks to Mayor Bruno, who is donating two bikes, which is the first more important thing.
Girls in front.
Cake box.
Girls in front. All right, thank you, Trustee Whitmore. Trustee McCarthy.
I don't have anything.
Trustee McCarthy.
A couple of quick things. Uh, one is the, uh, last year, we had started drafting and researching a mobile food vendor ordinance, uh, primarily focused on food trucks. And then, uh, after getting some feedback from our brick and mortar restaurants, uh, tabled that to try and allow for some recovery time, uh, for COVID before additional potential competition. But we, uh, started going back through that, uh, the, the kind of licensing period for that is, is made first, and so, uh, in talking with Dave, we're gonna, uh, have a committee meeting and, and try and have something at, uh, at least one of the March meetings to discuss. To be able to bring forward. Uh, it's still a handful of open questions on it that we're working through, but want to have that in place prior to that, that licensing period for the summer. The, the other one that had come up last year a, a couple of times was the special events ordinance, um, or outdoor events ordinance, I think it's labeled as, so. We're looking at that as well, to see how ours compares to some of the other communities out there. It's one that hasn't been updated a lot. It's, it's not a very lengthy or overly complicated ordinance, but just making sure that, uh, some of the references in it are, are clear. And for anyone wanting to do an event, that there, there's no, uh, unnecessary gray of what is an event and what isn't. And then, uh, after we get through those, uh, one of the other big ones that we've discussed is the, uh, time ordinance, one to go back and, and read. It's been a while since we've, uh, looked at that one. And that one involves the, uh, planning and zoning board. There'd be a requirement for, for public hearings there, but, uh, that's on the radar for, for looking at this year as well. And then the other thing that Dave mentioned earlier is, uh, I, I, I mean, like many of our, our staff, we've had, wore a lot of hats. And so sorting through between building, uh, maintenance and, uh, finances, economic development, um, the, the building department, I'd say there's a lot of things to sort through. So talking through a lot of different options now as far as what pieces of that may fit well with contracted services or consulting services, which can be, uh, potentially absorbed into other roles, which pieces, uh, will Dave be able to do the heaviest listing on? Where do we need to, to fill with, with, uh, a position? So, uh, we'll be bringing, talking through those options, bringing recommendations very soon.
Okay.
That is all I have.
Uh, yeah, I want to bring, bring that back to the table regarding food trucks in the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do want to bring that back, so. I appreciate that. Maybe that'd be something you could take and work with, uh, Dave.
Well, so we're, we're working on that. We, we've had some discussions on it. We'll, we'll pull in Trustee Levin as, as part of that committee and, and, and bring some recommendations back to this group.
You set committee of all?
No, so it'll, it'll just be, we'll meet as a.
Okay.
Administration, a committee, a committee, and then bring those recommendations to the board.
Okay, great.
But it's likely with, uh, it, it, there likely be some public discussion on that, so we'll, we'll do at least one public reading before, or, or two public readings before a, a vote, but. Having two meetings in March, um, assuming we can work through some of the open questions, may allow for that to happen a little bit.
Okay, very good. Thank, thank you, Trustee Hargit. Anything else? I don't have anything. Uh, I said my piece under Mayor's report, so I'll just ask for a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
Second.
Roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.